I would like to call the August meeting, Suffolk Planning Commission, to orders. I will call on Commissioner Goodman for the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we say thank you for this opportunity to come once again in this planning meeting. And Father, we declare wisdom as we go forth to do the work of this city. And God, we speak peace over our city, over our leaders, over our police force, and we say thank you, now, Father, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Wyer, may you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Creakmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwin.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Vice Chairman Staler.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wyer. Are there any corrections to the minutes from the July meeting? If not, they stand as approved as printed. This afternoon, we have two items for public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item that we will deal with this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-016 Jungle Jam Play Cafe. Mr. Wyer, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-016 Jungle Jams Play Cafe, submitted by Megan Hopkins Jungle Jams Play Cafe LLC, applicant on behalf of Holland Plaza Associates LP, property owner. In accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor on property located at 1238 Holland Road, zoning map 34D*A, parcels 2 and 3. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, zoned B2, general commercial zoning district. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, suburban use district. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-016. Making his Planning Commission debut today is Kevin Alexander, staff planner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Alexander, city planner, City of Suffolk. As previously stated, the CUP is to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor. The subject property is located in the ring suburban district within the central growth To the north of the property is zone M2 heavy industrial, and to the east of the property is also zoned the same. To the south of the property is zone C for conservation. To the west of the property is zone residential low medium zoning district. At this proposed location, there was a previous CUP that was approved for this site back in 2012, which is no longer active. The use established as a part of that CUP was to establish an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor within suites 104. The current applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor within suites 104 and 105. The applicant is proposing to utilize the suites as a play area or play cafe for children as well as host birthday parties and family dinner nights. Here we have a proposed layout that includes an office, two bathrooms, a mother's lactation room, a play area, or a generalized play area that's going to be utilized for kids' events and the birthday parties. All food and any beverages will be prepackaged, and nothing will be cooked or prepared on site, according to the applicant. The requested hours are very indifferent from what we would normally permit for this type of use, and what they suggested was very restrictive. So we're proposing or recommending that the following operations and hours be approved to similar uses that was previously approved in these type of uses, such as from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., midnight Friday and Saturday. And that aligns with previous approved uses. Based on the findings outlined in staff's report, the Holland Road Shopping Center is surrounded by single-family homes to the west and commercial uses to the east. The shopping center should serve as a hub for a variety of retail and commercial uses in the community. The proposed use is appropriate for the existing shopping center, and with conditions recommended by staff, it should not have an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood or businesses. Lastly, staff finds that the proposed use of an amusement, entertainment, recreation center indoor meets the criteria for a conditional use permit set forth in 31306 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of the CUP 2023-016 with the conditions as noted in staff's report and in the attached resolution. Didn't want to keep up your time, so that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any answers and any questions you may have following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, City Council and Chairman. My name is Megan Hopkins. That's my husband, Antonio Hopkins.
Good afternoon.
And we are hoping to open Jungle Jams Play Cafe in Suffolk. We looked at this location and others, but we really want to open something in central Suffolk because we have so many families around here, and they don't always want to drive to Harborview or Chesapeake or Virginia Beach. We wanted something here for our kids here. Our son was in Suffolk Youth Sports Association for soccer when he turned three, and there's just so many kids, but there's nowhere for parents to go and have their kids play in a safe, clean environment without having to run after them the entire time. The vision for Jungle Jams is that you can sit, you can relax, you can talk with other parents, and your kids are going to be in a safe environment, not running across the street or where you can't see them. You'll be able to see your kids from every area of Jungle Jams.
Good afternoon. My name's Antonio Hopkins. Looking at the census data and everything, for Suffolk, there's roughly around 98,000 people. 6% of that consists of children under the age of five and under. So we see the need for this because Suffolk is growing constantly, and there's children under the age of five, where this would be a great area for them to be able to go into.
Any additional comments? You want to make any additional comments?
My last comment is, there's a saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." A lot of people here, us included, were military. We didn't have that village to raise our kids. We have a two-year-old and a four-year-old. He was deployed for about 10 months, and that was like the hardest 10 months of my life. And I wish I had a place where I could be with other parents or caregivers and get that support, that community support, and build that village. So that's what we hope for Jungle Jams, to be a community hub where parents, caregivers can go and interact with other parents, caregivers, and have their kids play in a safe, friendly environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hopkins. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none. I would like to close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or motion?
Chair, I offer motion that we accept CUP 2023-016 with the seven stipulations at the end.
Second. Second. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyer, may you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of six to zero.
Congratulations. This body give your motion of approval, and it will go to City Council with that recommendation on September 20th. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is ordinance text amendment OAT 2023-007, and it's initiated by the City of Suffolk. And, Mr. Wyer, may you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-007, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 7, Supplemental Use Regulations, Section 31, 726, warehouses and warehousing. The purpose of this text amendment is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 31. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to ordinance text amendment OTA 2023-007. Also making her Planning Commission debut is our Assistant Director of Planning, Meg Pittenger, who will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. As Kevin said, I'm Meg Pittenger, Assistant Director of Planning. Before you today, we do have an ordinance text amendment to create some standards for warehousing and warehouses in the city. Currently, there are no specific supplemental use regulations for warehouses and warehousing. By and large, these are done on already zoned property, M1 and M2, where they are permitted by right, so it does not require a public hearing through Planning Commission or City Council. They just have to meet the regular zoning standards. There are many uses in the UDO that require additional standards, and this will be adding some standards for the warehouse and warehousing uses. You know, there are some issues that sometimes arise from these uses. They have some often negative impacts to the adjacent and surrounding properties and the roadway network. I'm sure some of you all have heard some of these. You know, there are noise, traffic, truck parking, that we frequently get complaints about. So the purpose of the regulations is to mitigate some of these potential impacts on newly established warehouse and warehousing uses. To adjacent public property, residential uses, institutional uses, agriculture uses, conservation uses, recreational uses, and the roadway network. So essentially, everything except other industrial uses and commercial uses. So the proposed regulations, and I'm going to step you through them, will address setbacks, sound barrier requirements, noise, truck and truck cab parking requirements, stacking spaces for trucks, a truck routing plan requirement, landscape buffer, and then some provisions for waiver of setback requirements in some very limited circumstances. So I'm going to step you through these regulations, and I'm going to show you some examples at the end of some areas where there might be some concerns. So the regulations propose that there be a minimum 30-foot front, side, and rear setback from all adjacent public right-of-way, public property, and all abutting properties containing residential uses, institutional uses, agriculture uses, conservation, and recreational uses. For the most part, in the M1 and M2, they already have a 30-foot setback for the building. This will provide additional setbacks for the drive aisles, the parking areas, trash loading areas, which are some of the areas that can create some of that noise. And setbacks, as you all know, and the public may not know, setbacks are measured from the property line to the item on the property that is being developed. You may hear some conversation during the public hearing about a 1,000-foot setback, which I believe that that individual is talking more about a distance separator, which is measured from property line to adjacent property. Setbacks are on the property itself. We are proposing a sound barrier requirement, which would be required along the entire perimeter of the property containing the use, where to butts adjacent public property, again, residential uses, institutional uses, agricultural, conservation, and recreational uses. That sound barrier, we're giving some options there. It may be either in the form of a 60-foot wide buffer with a minimum eight-foot tall berm, and then three staggered rows of evergreen shrubs, or a sound barrier wall. And if they choose to have the sound barrier wall, then that would need to be constructed to the VDOT standards and be eight feet tall and eight inches thick. Continuing on, we're proposing some noise regulations. This is actually in compliance with the noise regulation in the loading standards that's already in the UDO. This is just kind of reiterating it and adding a little bit of uses of activities that cannot occur within that, creating that noise level. So talking about delivery, loading, unloading, coupling and uncoupling of trucks, which can be very noisy, trash removal, compaction, and other operations between that 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. timeframe. The UDO already has standards in 608 where it's got some performance standards for this, and this is in line with that, but adds these additional things. That 45 decibel standard is already in the UDO, that if they want to do these activities in that quiet period, then they would need to demonstrate that they are below that 45 decibel level, which is pretty low. But the use also has to comply with the noise ordinance regulations that are already in the UDO that regulate 60 decibels at residential property from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., 55 decibels from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then 50 decibels. So they have to comply with that, whether you adopt these or not. That's still the regulation. And noise is always measured on the property receiving the noise, not on the property generating the noise. So if you're a residential property, that's where we're going to measure the noise, wherever that property is located. And we're also proposing that the yard trucks and forklifts that are often moving some of these containers and chassis around on the facilities have a white noise backup generator rather than that beep, beep, beep that you hear all the time that can be quite piercing. We are proposing that there be required truck and truck cab parking on the site so that that does not, and like I said, I'm going to show you some examples at the end of where that can be a problem, on the site, based on the size of the facility, how many warehouse bays or doors that they have. And they provide it so that it is available before, maybe outside of the hours that the facility is open, because sometimes you find these things are parked at Lowe's, or on a street, or at 7-Eleven, waiting for the warehousing facility to be opened. This is going to require them to provide that parking on-site and available to the trucks, complying with the noise ordinance, so they can't sit there idling their truck loud, so that that truck or truck cab is not sitting somewhere else waiting to get onto the facility. We are proposing that there be stacking spaces for trucks. These are going to be located at the gates. Often, these things are controlled access, so you have a gate, but if that gate is right next to the right-of-way, where are those trucks going? Right? They're just backing up out into the right-of-way and causing problems. You know, we are proposing that there be four stacking spaces per stacking lane. At 75 feet, that approximately gets you 300 feet back, which again is just a design issue. Typically, they have enough space to do these things, but it's getting it away from the right-of-way, so these trucks are not backing up into the street or ending up on some other piece of property. We are, this is a big one. So we're proposing a required truck routing and signage plan to be submitted for approval by the city, and they will need to provide details of how they're going to keep the trucks on the approved routes, so that they are not ending up in the neighborhoods, taking the cut-through, going in places on roads that were not designed for these large trucks and these large volume of traffic. And if there's signage that's going to be required to keep them on there, the facility would be required to pay for that signage. We are proposing, within those additional setbacks, required landscape buffers. So 20 feet along the roadways, again, to kind of mitigate some of that visual impact as we're going down some of our roadways, and 15 feet along basically everything else that's not industrial or commercial. And there'll be required plantings. They can't just, you know, plant whatever they want. There'll be required planting. It's specified in the proposed regulations. They can use existing vegetation, provided it's in healthy condition, meets all the other standards. Again, that language is already in the UDO for existing vegetation. So, you know, if they've got a vegetated buffer that's established, we don't want them to rip it down and just to plant something else. So if they've got that, that's actually preferred for them to be able to keep that. So I said at the beginning that we do have some limited cases where we may consider some waivers of the setback requirements only, not of everything else, because you may have some existing sites, some industrial parks that are existing as of basically, you know, today, or before it goes to City Council, or for expansion of existing industrial uses, that the director may have the authority to waive the requirements of setbacks. You've got some existing sites, particularly, like say, down here, without mentioning names, that, you know, may not have the space to do some of these things. But the applicant is going to have to demonstrate the need. We've got some very specific standards, which again are similar to the site plan waiver of requirements that already exist in the UDO, to allow them that they have to demonstrate. They can't just ask and automatically get waived, that they've got to demonstrate that they need to have those setbacks, that they don't have the space to do that additional setbacks. So I'm going to walk you through a few examples and point out some issues that staff feels might be a concern for some properties maybe getting developed in the future. So this first one, you can see this is along Nansman Parkway, and you've got the Seaborn Coastline Trail in green there, along here, that is the walking trail. You've got an elementary school right there that is zoned RLM, but all that surrounding property, as you can see there in kind of the light gray, is zoned M1 currently. So again, by right development would be permissible there. And you can see it's surrounded, for the most part, by residential development, residential zoned property. So right now, somebody could go develop a warehouse there with no standards, no additional setbacks, other than what's currently in the ordinance, no requirements for truck routing, no requirements for sound mitigation. You know, people like to walk on the trail and have a nice peaceful, you know, environment. Having, you know, trucks backing up, you know, all hours of the day would probably not add to that environment. So we're suggesting that this might be a situation where you would want some additional standards to help protect the residential property, but then also, you know, the city has put significant resources into the trail, continues to put significant resources into the trail, creating positive quality of life for citizens. So here's another example. You've got this existing, it's the old General Dynamics plant there, and you've got, as you can see there, some residential zoned property that's around it. You've got some conservation property, and there's an additional warehouse that was built right in this area here. And this property up here did finally, after a couple of years of complaints, end up building a sound wall. You go out there, it looks like a VDOT sound wall, which has, for the most part, I believe, mitigated the complaints that have been being received. So these are some properties, again, that potentially, with the proximity to some sensitive areas and residential zoning and conservation areas, that staff feels that could use some additional standards for, again, M1 zoning by right development. So here's a situation that kind of prompted requiring some truck parking on-site. It's a public street, and the dead-end street there is full of trucks. You obviously couldn't, I don't think, drive very easily down that street, but it's also, again, not probably the best thing that you want, and that facility, just adjacent to it, you know, has got trucks, but has no ability to contain them within the site. And then here you have, adjacent to, brand-new tractor supply, brand-new built cul-de-sac, and full of, if you zoomed out on the Google Street Map there, like, there's even more trucks than what is pictured in this picture here. Truck cabs, full-on tractor trailers, just parked there, waiting to go to the warehouse facilities in the surrounding area there. So again, staff feels like mitigating some of these concerns that seem to immediately happen with some of these uses would be in the public's best interest. And with that, I will stand by now or at the conclusion of a public hearing for any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Ms. Pittenger. Ms. Megan. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone else, like, is there anyone who would like to make any comments in favor of this request? I think staff has exhausted their comments at this point. Okay. Is there anyone that's to speak in opposition?
Thomas Rhine, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk, Virginia. Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I sincerely appreciate it. I oppose OTA 2023-007 warehouses and warehousing as proposed because I feel it falls short of providing an effective framework for the future development of warehouses in Suffolk. Although there are good ideas noted here, such as the truck routing, truck parking, and landscaping buffers, I don't feel they go far enough. The biggest concern, though, that I do have is the recommendation for a minimum 30-foot front, side, and rear setback from the abutting property containing residential uses. I have previously spoken on this topic to both the Planning Commission and City Council, and provided multiple studies from respected and recognized public and private institutions on this topic, including states of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and California, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and the Department of Economics and Business, North Carolina State University, among others. With rare exception, all of these studies strongly recommend a 1,000-foot setback from any residential property line to effectively mitigate noise, light, air pollution, and a known decline in property values. I know I don't have enough time to go into all these specifics standing up here, so I'm once again going to leave hard copies of all these studies for you to review. In my mind, this ordinance that we're talking about, OTA 2023-007, is the most important ordinance you will vote on this year. Suffolk is now a warehouse community. This is the exact words from the city government in a 2020 document that I found online. Whether we like it or not, it's here, and I hear this all the time, the trucks are here, the warehouses are here. I'm not fighting against them. I'm just trying to get to Mr. Saylor's request, which I sincerely appreciate. The last meeting, he asked for more delineation on this, I think, anyway, that's what I heard. I do pay attention to you guys, too. It's incumbent upon us, whether we like it or not, upon all of us, to get it right. I'm asking you to request the Planning Department to take more time to review what other experts in this field are recommending, and come back to the citizens of Suffolk with a more complete and rationalized plan. I do thank, Ms. Pittenger, is it? Yes. For her time. I did contact her. I reached out to her to discuss this. She was very sharing with me. We just have a different opinion on what some of the definitions mean. But I think, again, I'm just asking you, if you have any doubt at all, to please read the documentation that these other states, who are in the thick of warehousing and warehouse sprawl, the negative and positive impacts that it has brought to them, just to read it. I'm not asking you to deny, you know, warehousing or to stop it. We know that's not going to happen. I just want to get it right. So there is a lot of documentation, too, in our files of Suffolk that is not discussed here, such as high cube warehouses, which are a totally different animal. So those are things I'd just like to consider. You know, we talk about a three-page document coming out of Suffolk, Planning Department. These are intense studies. I'm just asking you to take the time to go over them. And I've sent these before, and I'll offer again, I've got 35 years' background in transportation, logistics, and the automotive industry. I offered this before, and I'll offer it again as far back as December of 2022. I'd be more than happy to sit down with anybody in planning or the city government to go over these documents or anything else. You know, I live right across the street from the North Gate Commerce Park. I'm concerned about this ability to provide waivers for these things when the discussion was, you know, this could be an issue, meaning the trucks parking- and things like that and the noise. And instead of giving the director the authority, which, you know, it is what it is, and I totally respect Mr. Wine, the ability to waive this stuff, we should be looking at ways to mitigate it more, not to just push it off. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rhine. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? That ends time for opposition. I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Question of staff. Because the numbers are so far away, how did we come up with a 30-foot setback?
So the 30-foot setback is intended to be in line with what we have in the SCOD overlay district, which is kind of the most restricted street overlay district that we have. Again, the 1,000 feet kind of relates to a distance separator, which you sometimes find, you might have a distance separator where you don't want a manufacturing use next to a school, and you require that. Setback is actually on the property itself. It's a different thing. We are not proposing at this time a distance separator for these uses. Again, you know, these properties have been zoned this industrial for some time, for the most part.
And to offer some additional clarification there, the setback that we are proposing does not exist currently. Right now, the drives and parking areas, stacking areas, for instance, can be built right up to the property line. And what we found is those uses, trucks idling in parking areas, for instance, generate a lot of noise. So what we're trying to do is require them to be further from the property line and not necessarily right up against the property line. So that's kind of the heart of that setback requirement, is removing some of those outdoor uses associated with these distribution and warehouse facilities away from the property line that just currently does not exist in our ordinance.
And the effort also is to create a standard that's reasonable, not to have it be overly restricted, but also mitigate some of the concerns as well.
Mr. Saylor's hand.
Nope.
Any other questions, comments from the Commissioners? I will accept a motion, and that's for the, at our station, we have the amended text amendment for Exhibit B, and it would be a motion with the amended text.
And I'll take an opportunity. We did not note that, but there is an amended version at your station at the dais here. There were no material changes as a part of that. There was a reference to a state code as it related to the type of asphalt. We removed that reference to state code, and there were some just minor additions as far as conjunctions that were utilized to link this language, but none of them were substantial or material. And they come at the recommendation and review of our city attorney's office.
Just going to step up.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of OTA 2023-007, I presume, as amended.
Got a second from Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion of the motion?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of 70-0.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. This text amendment recommendation ordinance will go to City Council on 9/20. I'd like to thank staff for all the diligent work that they put into getting us to this point. Thank you. And to close our public hearings for today, we have any old business, any Commissioners?
No, sir.
Okay. New business, status report, Mr. Wine?
Yeah, status report of City Council's meeting on July 19, 2023, conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-013, that was 1832 Cotton Farm Lane. They requested permission to receive a conditional use permit to establish an accessory dwelling. That was approved with the staff recommended conditions. Ordinance text amendment, OTA 2023-005. This would allow the ability, in certain circumstances, to utilize gravel for your parking areas in the agricultural district and for certain agricultural uses. This was approved by City Council as well. And then we had a variety of items before City Council as it related to our historic district design guidelines. The, those were tabled, the guidelines themselves were tabled for 30 days, as was an ordinance text amendment that aligned with some of those changes. As outlined in the historic district guidelines, should they be adopted, there are certain ordinance texts that need to be changed, that would need to be changed, rather. The primary purpose of tabling that for 30 days was to allow staff an opportunity to devise a color palette and implement some strategies for regulating color within the district previously and as proposed previously in the version that you all saw. We would not have done that. We removed that requirement. But tomorrow night, City Council will consider a change that would regulate color as it relates to the creation of four palettes that have been selected, pretty comprehensive palettes that identify appropriate colors in the district. One significant change still is currently in the historic district. Color does require, changing color requires review by the Historic Landmarks Commission. We would not require that moving forward. It would be an administrative decision by the department. So we still think that is a win. So final action on that, we hope, will be tomorrow night before City Council.
Commissioners, any comments?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, my chairperson, and those of you who elected not to say yes, I want to go, to last month's Virginia chapter of APA conference. Had an excellent time, got a chance to realize that I know more about planning than I thought I did. They had a special piece that they used for all Planning Commissioners. And of course, the Mac Chandler was in charge of that piece. And he asked me questions that I had answers to. I was just so elated with myself. But then there was a piece that we discovered, or that I personally discovered on the trip, that I'm not going to really get into because I don't want you guys to catch it the wrong way. But just know that I'm going to be coming to you talking about the city of Suffolk and a special license, a special liquor license for once we get the park across the street. I'm going to put you something in writing because I don't want you guys to take me wrong. But thanks again. You guys didn't want to go? You don't want to go next year? Either send Williamsburg, I'll go for you.
Thanks, Commissioner Hicks. I was going to thank you for going. We had to do some judging.
Maybe next year, too.
And I said that you will probably be available, and you will gladly go. And you did. Thank you again. If there's any other comments for Commissioners?
I have a comment. I would like to say that I appreciate getting these little jewels here instead of getting the packet, hard copy packets, and primarily because we are given, you were able to give us more information, like these slides, for example, that we just saw. We were able to review those prior to that. And also, so it gives the Planning Department more ability to share information with us on these computers. So thank you very much to the Planning Department and the staff that provides all that.
But what it doesn't give them is the ability to have to back out of my driveway. That's the work of art. And I'm going to need them to come and exercise.
Talk about traffic safety. We take, backing out of your driveway, we take our life in our own hands.
If that's nothing else, Commissioners, we stand adjourned.